Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the New Britain Board of Education on December 4th to order. The time is 6:01 PM. We rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Ms. Riss, would you make?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You? In the said words, roll call, please.
Mr. Kane with the C.
Yo.
Mr. Estevales.
Present.
Mr. Kane with the K.
Here.
Mr. Listrow.
Here.
Ms. Moreno.
Here.
Ms. Pecos.
Here.
Ms. Tina.
Here.
Mr. Reyes.
Here.
Mr. Rivera.
Here.
And Ms. Santana.
Bring her.
And a moment of meditation. Okay, apologies if I messed up the name. Nassar Alstemi?
So, good evening, Board of Ed and Dr. Gasper and everyone here in the public and everyone else I recognize, some familiar faces. I will speak for maybe 30 seconds and then I'm going to hand it over to Nassar. I'm Gino Ayala, School Counselor at New Britain High School and Coordinator of the Peace Room. I'm here to support the students that you see behind me, one of whom will speak in a second, and I can't say it better than he will, so I won't say too much about why. We're here in what he'll say, but I do want to say as the Coordinator of the Peace Room, we're at New Britain High School to help students resolve conflict and we're also there to help students be engaged. And first, I want to say thank you to the Board. I haven't done this in a long time, so thank you for all of your support of New Britain High School students and all of New Britain students. I want to say thank you to everyone else who served in the path in the Board I recognize just observing today. That support is priceless. And I also want to invite you, come down to the Peace Room, Room 119 in New Britain High School. We're doing the work every day, right? And the students are in need. You all know this, I don't have to tell you, and you'll hear some of that pain actually in a second, and that's why we're here. But I stand behind them 110%, and I hope that the Board will support them. And this isn't the first time that we'll talk, so we'll be back. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board. Thank you for your time today. My name is Nassar Alstemi and I'm a senior at New Britain High School. We are here as representatives of a large portion of the student body. Many of them are being affected regarding the current events in the Middle East. For those of you that aren't aware, there's a conflict going on taking place between Israel and Palestine by genocide on the Palestinian people. Over 50,000 death, including women and children. We believe as a school community that we need to educate those guiding us through our school days about how these events affect us. We wish for support and sensitivity regardless of our own personal beliefs. There have been issues taking place in the high school as well. Educators within the building have been showing signs of taking sides and shared their views with students making them uncomfortable. Cyberbullying and cyber threats towards the Muslim-American community have indeed happened as well. These were from students. The lack of awareness of the current conflict is a big problem. We have also made the suggestion of removing a mural in the high school, a mural containing the Israeli flag. And as an alternative to design and develop a mural promoting peace and prosperity, because we currently aren't feeling this way since our school isn't supporting us. That is why we come to you, to provide the support that is needed for the Muslim-American community and not just Muslims. There are students that are non-Muslim who are also affected as well. Students a part of this community have expressed their concerns and do not feel supported by their administrators. And finding a solution in terms of the education, some of these students would participate in the education of Staff District Board. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is Sharon Svedra.
Hello, I am older woman Sharon Boyne Svedra, 77, Birchwood Drive in New Britain. First, let me congratulate all of you, new Board members, on your reelection or new election to the Board. Welcome to the awesome body that I had the privilege of spending 12 years of my life serving. I did want to come today to speak to the issue of the vote on leadership. In my understanding, that the two caucuses are divided and that there will be a 5-5 split in the vote that takes place this evening, I find that very disappointing. You are role models for the students, and after just listening to the issue of the Peace Room at the high school, perhaps there should be a Peace Room here at the Board of Education where adults get together and talk out their differences and their opinions and come to a resolution prior to it needing to be forwarded to the City Council. I always prided myself when I was a member of the Board that the Board was a separate and distinct entity from the City Council and that the City Council should not interfere in the business of the Board. So the idea that the 10 of you could not come to some understanding of shared leadership because you are equally divided in terms of political representation, I'll say it again, shared leadership. When I was on the Board, Nick Mercer was a Republican, I was a Democrat, and we shared that leadership because we were equally divided in terms of our political election. And I think you all need to take a good, hard look at when you converse with each other, if you have been, that shared leadership is the way to move forward, not a power play, not sending this issue to another elected body to make a decision that is your decision to make. But if it does come to the City Council, I'm ready to vote on it, but I shouldn't have to. It should be something that 10 adults, 10 reasonably elected adults from the New Britain community should be able to come to this decision on your own without guidance from the City Council. And that's really what I came here to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that's wishing to participate? Anyone else wishing to participate? Anyone else wishing to participate? No? All participations closed. Next item is election of officers. Is there a nomination for the Chair Officer position? Ms. Murphy?
I nominate a person who's been Secretary for the Board and on the Wellness Committee in his second term, and that would be Joey Listrow.
Thank you. Are there other nominations for Sharon? Mr. Kane?
Yes, thank you. In the spirit of shared leadership as negotiated in 2015 and subsequently established in our bylaws, I nominate Barbara Moreno for President for the period of December 2023 through December of 2024, to be followed by Joey Listrow for the period of December 2024 through December 2025.
Okay, so is there any other nominations for Board Chair? No? We have to vote three times. So all those in favor of voting for Joey Listrow for Board Chair signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Okay. All those in favor of appointing Joey Listrow as Board Chair signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Okay. One more time. All those in favor of appointing Joey Listrow as Board Chair signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All those in favor of appointing Barbara Moreno as Board Chair signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
All those in favor of appointing Barbara Moreno Board Chair signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
We do a roll call. Roll call body needs your... Okay. In other words, do you need a roll call for the previous vote?
I have votes.
Sure. All those in favor of appointing Barbara Moreno as Board Chair signify by saying aye. Raise your pen, please.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, seeing how there is no Board Chair appointed, we cannot move on with other election of officers.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we table to our generating meeting. I second your move.
Okay, discussion?
Nay, Mr. Secretary. The Board has incredibly important work to do, and the lack of its usual committee structure has already slowed down my staff and my work. I request that the Board resolve this issue as quickly as possible.
I appreciate that, Dr. Gasper, but we kept that in question in the past. Even as opposed two years ago when we couldn't have decided on Secretary position, we tabled it to a January meeting, which gave us size to try to work out agreement. As Oliver Svedra said, 10 adults has come to work this out themselves, so I strongly think we should just table it, give ourselves a month to try to work this out.
I don't believe respectfully that there's anything in your bylaws that would prevent an election from happening at a duly noticed special meeting if that could be done more quickly.
Is my understanding correct that the City Council would be voting on this as early as next week?
So I did share the statute with the Board earlier today, coming from Attorney Jessica Ritter, and I believe as your bylaws and the statute say, it's within 30 days the Board must elect leadership within 30 days of the election. So if I recall correctly, I believe the election was November 7th?
I believe it's when they get once the elected people are installed, so it's the date of inauguration.
Thank you, Ray.
I would like to say something. In response to this situation, I just want to say that we had Gail Sanders as the President in this Board. She caused a very agreement that Ms. Svedra spoke about, that she and Nick came to an agreement that we will have one Democrat and one Republican for those positions, which we honor. That's why Gail was in that position. Now, it's supposed to be a Democrat that's the Board Chair, and it's supposed to be the Republican that's the Vice. So I don't know why we're changing, because we followed it since they voted it in, they were here, so I don't know why we're having this discussion, because it should have been an automatic thing. In the past, we have not had to come in here and have a 5-5 vote based on something that had been worked out by these people years ago, and everybody was happy with it then, and we followed. Even if we weren't a majority, we followed. So I don't understand. I don't understand what is going on here. Why are we changing things? And it's not the Democrats that are changing.
So, we had, back in 2021, we had actually chosen different candidates as Republicans.
But that's not our problem.
And it was elected by six for a vote, that candidate and the five Democrats. And then last year, we did ask Merrill if we'd like to switch become President, he declined it. So we gave the opportunity to, that's what we're asking you to do. One year, one party, next year we switch to the other party. That's what we're asking you to do.
But our past two years, we've had a registered Republican as our Chair.
And we've offered to switch it back, and we were told the Democrats wanted to keep the run. We were all for, our four, the four, five Republicans were all for switching. We were told that you guys wanted to keep it, so we made the offer, we turned to the switch, and we were defying it.
The fact is though, you guys in your party had some disagreement about who you wanted. That has nothing to do with us. That was something that you all worked out between you. We brought it before, then we voted on it. So we had no say.
There was no disagreement within our party. There was disagreement between the other Republicans and the Democrats, to be clear. The Democrats all supported Ms. Interstar, none of the Republicans did.
Who was it?
She won, that's all I know.
I made the motion on the floor is to, can you repeat that, Mr. Kane? I made the motion that we need to...
Yes, sorry, Mr. Kane.
Yeah, it's a motion table to the board, and gives a chance to try and negotiate something. Is there any more discussion on that motion?
Which would be sooner, the 30 days from inauguration or the January 8th meeting? Or could we just consider a special meeting?
We could. A special meeting would be sooner.
Which is sooner, the inauguration date or the City Council? I mean, the City Council or the next?
The only thing as far as the 30 days from inauguration, which is roughly right now, saying that you have to at least by that point in time, which we are doing, sitting down and having discussion, does not mean it has to be unsuccessful. It just means it has to occur. The next thing after that then is whatever next steps. So we're in line with the state statute as far as within 30 days for holding elections. That's all it's saying. That's all the state statute says.
And that's exactly what we're interested in.
Okay, any more discussion of motion? All those in favor of postponing the election of officers to the January meeting date?
Mr. Secretary, may I interrupt? I just want to, for clarity, I want to quote, if I may, the statute as provided by the Board's Attorney. In bold italics, underlined from your attorney, "If such officers are not chosen after one month because of a tie of the members, the Town Council, or if there is no Town Council, the selectmen of the town shall choose."
After one month.
I'm not your attorney, but I read this as though the election must occur, not just a discussion of officers.
It's a tie, if it's still... Correct.
It's a...
Notice it was on our agenda and we voted aye.
Okay.
So we're excited. Okay.
Okay. Motion to postpone the election of officers to the January meeting date. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
So to be clear, the elections are not tabled?
Correct. Okay, moving on to Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. As has become our tradition or my tradition with the Board, you have before you an advanced copy of, I would like to appear, our award-winning district newsletter composed by our excellent communications department with input from staff all over the district. If you have not recently, I strongly recommend that Board members, especially new Board members, take time to read the district dispatch. It's available, of course, in English, Spanish, and Arabic on our website, and as we have each month, Superintendent's Recognitions. This edition features an introduction to our facilities and operations staff, a very nice, somewhat brief article on our implementation of our new reading resources and curriculum, and a wide variety of updates throughout the remainder of the document. So this is a document about which I'm quite proud, not just of how it looks. Again, as I've said many times, I believe that it looks like a national magazine, but also the content. And as we all know, we are a city and a school district that has not always been in the good graces of the press, so we take the time to sing our own song and tell our own story, and I think you will find a lot to be proud of in the district dispatch each month. And again, thank you to our communications staff for such a good job. I do have a prepared statement, which is not my tradition tonight, but as a way of introducing and welcoming the Board members. Good evening, Board members. Congratulations to those of you who have won reelection, and welcome to those of you who are joining the Board for the first time. To those of you who are new to this work, I believe you will, I believe that you will find it to be challenging, engaging, and rewarding. The work of a Board of Education gains its power and influence from the four main charges to every Board of Education given by Connecticut State Statute. These charges are: approve curriculum, adopt a budget, adopt policy, and evaluate the performance of the Superintendent's words. In particular, to New Britain, this Board of Education and I, as your Superintendent, have a tremendous amount of work to do, work that is important. This work will require that you, as a panel of 10 elected officials, and I, as your Chief Executive Officer, come to consensus thoughtfully and efficiently. The future holds a large number of high-impact decisions on which the children of New Britain will need our clearest thinking and most astute listening. We will need to find balance, agreement, and wisdom. In just three weeks' time, Ms. Alfano, my CFO, and I will present to you our recommended budget for the 2024-2025 school year. With the phasing out of federal COVID recovery monies, this will be a particularly difficult budget year. In the early days of the pandemic, the Board hired nearly 300 employees using these temporary dollars, and my staff and I are working hard to present to you a recommended budget that will reduce our staffing down to near pre-pandemic levels while maintaining an eye on effective instruction for New Britain's children. As soon as a Finance, Facilities, and Transportation Committee can be seated, my staff and I are ready to present to you the findings from our long-needed facilities audit, composed by an expert third-party firm. The district has lacked such an audit for many years. This document will not just be about roofs, boilers, and square footage. This will be an important watershed moment in our school district's history. The Board will have important decisions to make about how many school buildings we should have, which should be renovated, and what should be the purpose of each one. The Board is currently without a strategic plan. Such a plan is needed to guide the Superintendent as he proposes budgets, infrastructure upgrades, staffing plans, and large-scale decisions. The Board's policy manual is in need of a full and thorough review. The Board's policies are integral to a well-functioning school district, and they allow the Superintendent to know that he is acting in accordance with your wishes, the elected officials. The Board has not yet set evaluation goals for the Superintendent. These goals should be tied to the yet-to-be-composed strategic plan. It's imperative that you provide me, your Chief Executive Officer, with the guidance of evaluation goals prior to the start of next school year, so that I can ensure that my actions are in alignment with your vision for our school system. In closing, I wish this Board the vision to see through the sometimes murky work of elected officials, the diligence to persevere when the work becomes difficult, and the grace to find consensus when political whims are tugging at your shirt sleeves. I remain proud to serve the children of New Britain, and with your dedication to consensus, I believe that the best days for our school system still lie in front of us. Thank you. That's my report for this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Board reports. Does anyone have anything to share?
Yeah, I got a few things to share. First, last month, I was going downstairs from my usual duty at my school, manning the front lines, and who do I find there waiting but Tyrone Richardson and a bunch of New Britain administrators? It was nice to host you at my school. They were there to observe the yonder couches, and we gave, they had to see in action, as well as we met with the math boards to discuss the pros and cons and how well it's worked out at our school. So I just want to say thank you for coming to our school to see it, that you showed us enough interest to come. Also, I attended a Cade conference last month, and it was, I want to say disappointing, not like last year before us. It felt like the sessions I attended were more sales pitches from vendors than actual presentations. One promised how to handle teacher burnout, and I thought it'd be great preparation as we come to the possible massive layoffs we're going to have next year, and it was more a sales pitch for a program for student leadership. And seemingly, every time I attended was all a sales pitch from some vendor. So I wanted to pass on that. I was very disappointed in the Cade session this year. What I was impressed with was Windsor High School Choir made a great performance, and it got me thinking, we used to have an amazing choir at New Britain High School. Yes, we had the Magical's, but after the Magical Feast, I would love to see, I encourage us to kind of choir established at the high school for after the Magical time. We have amazing talented students at the high school. They sing beautifully in the Magical's. I love their shows. I'd love to see the kind of show choir that we could put on, and I'd like to see next year, New Britain High's choir at the Cade.
I'll also share that I attended the Cade conference as well, and the best part of the conference by far was the student panel, which had two students, but our very own Ms. Mohammed was a participant, and I think she knocked the room off their socks. It was incredible presentation. Mr. Panel, you all, you... I came late. Yeah. It was a really job well done. Thank you.
I had a number of fellow superintendents say the same thing. So thanks for representing us so well.
Yes, Mr. Kane.
I also wanted to share that I, too, was there, and I had the opportunity to actually ask her and the other student who was there on the panel, right? Because there were, you know, two, you know, really just young but very invested voices that really, you know what I mean? Like, a lot of other people would have shied away from it, not said anything, or just been too timid to really get up on stage. And they were up there talking as all could be and actually giving their two cents, you know, like, this is what happens, this is what I see, and I ask my friends, and here we go. And it was just amazing. So for that, not only was I proud to say, you know what, thank you for taking the reins there, because, you know, she just blew that other guy out of water. It was her and a guy, and she was just like, hold on a second, I got this. And she went, and it was just, it was beautiful. And so, and you would never even know, you know, like, anybody asked, that was very much New Britain. So it was really just wonderful to hear you speak, be able to actually, in a room full of people, go up there and start asking questions as well, and they were answering your questions as well as other people in the audience. For that, I thank you. Also, I checked in, as I always do with schools across the district, just because I do like having these conversations and just asking, hey, how's everybody? You know, you guys know that my kids are spread out throughout the district. I always talk to the staff and say, hey, what's going on? Just let me know. And so I checked in with Pulaski, and I was just really happy to see that they've got some good games across the Board. Thank you to Dr. Ortiz and his staff, just doing some really great things. And then also, at Slate, I attended my second coffee talk, but it's like their parent coffee talk, most fun thing ever, because they always have Meals Donuts, just saying if you've ever heard of coffee and Meals Donuts. They were so good. But anyway, so, anywhere there's coffee, there I am. But it was wonderful just being able to speak with the staff and just really getting, you know, just some feedback from them. And it was, you know, just great having those conversations. Prayers for Ms. Valby from Smith, who is anticipating, you know, going through some stuff. So I just want to say, I love Smith. They're at the top of the hill on Rutherford. I actually went to Smith Elementary. So just checking in around the district, and that's just that, so happy for that.
Just want to say, congratulations to the NBHS football team on the successful season. Made the playoffs, unfortunately lost in the first rounds down in West Haven, but they fought hard to the end, and they worked. So hopefully next year they'll be back and they'll be better. The Magical Feast is this weekend, although it's too late to get tickets for that. If you do have tickets, hopefully it'll be a great show. But also, December 12th, next Tuesday, 7:00 PM is New Britain High's winter concert at the High School Auditorium. And then I know that 12:19, there is a concert at Howl's, 6:00 PM. I do not know Slate or Pulaski's or any of the elementary schedules, but I'm sure many of them are having concerts as well in the next couple of weeks. If you have students attending any of your schools, grandkids, kids, you know, check out their schedules, ask your students to go there and get some of those concerts, spare your kids.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, student reports.
I just wanted to reintroduce myself to the new members of Board. My name is Ariane Mohammed, and I'm a senior at New Britain High School, so I just want to say hi. It's really great seeing new faces around here, and I really hope you guys just support New Britain in educating its students to the best it can be. So, Mr. Kane kind of sold some of my updates, but that's all right.
He's an involved...
So just for the other, there are three other student representatives. They're busy today, so it's just me. There is a Google forum still being in progress, just to be handed out to the high schools. There is a Google forum still being in progress, just to hand out to the high school students just so we could get some student feedback and see what changes are kind of the same or what changes we can make in the future for our education system. Also, many of the fall sports have ended, as we were saying football before, and the boys' basketball team tryouts were last week. And last Friday, there were also a lot of field trips with a lot of really good stuff, and a lot of students got to get involved. There was the Travelers Field Trip, which included that scholarship. So students got to go to the Travelers building in Hartford and learn more about the scholarship and what the business is about. And there was also a UConn field trip up to Storrs, their main campus, and I saw a lot of my friends there. It was nice. And then just a club at the school. It's a business club there. They got to go to a CAS conference, so the Connecticut Association of Schools, they had a conference, and they were able to attend that. And also, this Thursday is Career Connections. It's fun, and now senior portraits are available for students to pick up. I'm excited to see mine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ariane.
All right, presentation, How's Academy, Tiny House Project.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. We have Ms. Clerken and some students with us here tonight. Really a pleasure to have the students show off some of their work from How's Academy. Ms. Clerken.
Good evening again. Thank you to board members and Dr. Gasper and audience members. Thank you. My name is Leona Clerken. I am principal of How's Academy. I'm also coordinator of fine arts. And tomorrow, first thing on my agenda will be to send Asia the list of all the concerts so she can send them all to you, so that you can attend all of our concerts this winter. I'm pleased to present today two wonderful students, and also, we have Mrs. Fitzsimmons, who's our gifted resource teacher at How's Academy, who is the instructor who worked with these students on the Tiny House Project. Our students today are Naomi King and Victoria Vaughn, and they will be presenting. The learning target is, I can create a tiny home for a specific resident type that adapts to the needs of the New Britain community. In this eighth-grade unit, all How's Academy students, architects, researched four different design types in New Britain: homes for homeless, veterans, elderly, and young couples. They zeroed in on one chosen type, researched, and then designed a 2D floor plan of their tiny home on graph paper. Their design must adhere to the constraints of the tiny home, less than four hundred square feet, and must include certain indoor spaces and outdoor space, walls, windows, doors, appliances, and furniture. Then they record the area and perimeter of each on a recording sheet. To create their tiny home in 3D, the partners must then transfer their design onto Planner 5D website. Upon completion of their homes, students prepare a speech that was presented to the Housing Committee of New Britain for approval. They present it in front of their peers for a final project. So now I have the students, and they're going to present to you.
Welcome.
Did you know that the average dorm room costs eight thousand five hundred sixty to twelve thousand eight hundred seventy per year at a four-year institution? Also, did you know that forty-three percent of full-time college students and eighty-three percent of part-time college students work while enrolled in college? Me and my partner solved this problem, and we're thinking, what can we do to make a home that's more affordable for working college students?
Good evening, New Britain Housing Committee. Me and my partner Naomi have made a tiny house plan for college students in Connecticut, New Britain, because tiny houses cost less than average dorm per year and provides more space to do extra activities that you can't do without. It also allows you to stay at your tiny house accurate on college. But before we talk about our advantages, we would like to tell you our tiny house. So as you walk in and go to your left, you'll see the kitchen. You'll see the kitchen, then with a stove, a refrigerator, microwave, and many other kitchen.
Frozen.
Yeah. There's also a door that leads to the bathroom with everything you need, such as a shower, toilet, sink, and many more. As you exit out of the kitchen, there's a door that leads to our patio. We also have a living room that has a tiny workspace for our resident. And if you go up the ladder, you'll see our loft has two bookshelves, a beanbag, a dresser, wardrobe, twin-sized bed, and a nightstand. Now Naomi will be talking about our resident profile.
Our resident, Camila, who is twenty-four, likes the arts and dancing, has a dog named Flea. She's also a working college student that's about to graduate college. Something that she looked for in a tiny home was the affordability because she's a college student, which leads us to our first advantage.
An advantage to come to the tiny house is that it costs less. The average cost of a house in New Britain, Connecticut, is three hundred eighty thousand. But our tiny house was saved back to twenty-seven thousand, which is a three hundred fifty-three K cost difference. The area footage of our tiny house is three hundred ninety square feet. So the floors, wallpapers, and paint roughly cost thirteen thousand, not including the furniture. That means each square foot will cost thirty-three dollars, while the average house is one hundred forty dollars and up. Furthermore, we have cheap items. For instance, our couch costs one hundred thirty-six dollars, but the average price is between four hundred to fifteen hundred dollars. We also have a stove that costs four hundred dollars, but the average price is six hundred to thirteen hundred dollars. Lastly, we have a twin-sized bed that costs five hundred thirty dollars, but the norm is six hundred dollars. These are some of the cheap items making it great for, wait, these are some of the cheap items making it great for people who have a tight budget. That being said, our tiny house is affordable for college students. In addition, my partner will be talking about the other two advantages.
As you know, when you go to college, you're going to be moving in and out of a dorm each year. So I want to put this into the scenario for you all. Let's say that you go to school in California and you're about to graduate. You found a job in California that you really like, but here's the thing, you don't have a house in California. And you can't just buy a house because the average cost of a house in California is seven hundred thousand dollars. So why don't you just stay with your parents? Your parents live all the way in Massachusetts, just across the country. This is why our tiny home is the best for you. It provides consistency throughout your college life and your transition into adulthood. Not to mention, it also provides a lot more space, which a college dorm cannot give you. For example, we have a sixty-six square-foot porch for our resident, Camila, who likes to dance, and also for her dog, Flea, to sunbatman. We also have one hundred five square-foot playing area for the dog as well. Now, our house is pretty small, which can lead to minimal storage. But here, but here we can combat this with some of the things we have.
First, we have a couch that has storage in it, but it doesn't show in Planner 5D. In addition, we have a wardrobe in the first floor, and in our loft, we have shelves, more wardrobes, and a dresser. But since our dog is large, they wouldn't have space to play around in the house. That is why we installed a patio at the side of the house and more open space so the dog can relax and do whatever they want, which Naomi already mentioned. This patio and open space may also benefit our resident, since she also loves dancing and going for it. Finally, Naomi will be closing us off.
We have made a tiny home for young college students in New Britain, Connecticut, because tiny homes cost less than the average home, average dorm room per year, and provide more space for extra activities. And lastly, it allows stay after college. Thank you all for listening to our presentation.
Thank you very much. Very nicely done, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving into new business. May have a motion to approve minutes from the regular Board of Education meeting on November sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Discussion.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Passing. Somebody wants to abstain. Mr. Secretary, no.
Any abstentions? One abstention. Item B, may have a motion to approve the 2024 Board of Education meeting calendar. Set down a second?
Second.
Does it make sure that it conflicts with any religious holidays or any special events for holidays from the air?
Do you notice any?
That's what I'm wondering. That's what we, we had to set up in Washington. I remember one of them.
Also, there's other one?
I think it was Eid for last year during, it was, but it could change for, it could change each year. It was last year. We, I think we just pushed it off a week to accommodate for students who were celebrating.
Yeah, we moved, we increased our vacation.
Yeah.
Right now, the people, the balls of the money, I just feel like.
Do you remember last year, we also had the, we got the calendar from the Mandel Jewish Center, the JCC? It's never been, you know, the Federation, but one of the two had also sent us. It wasn't just the Muslim holidays, also the Jewish holidays as well.
So question, probably then looking to move the April from the eighth to first, but I'm.
I'm looking here on the day of April meeting falls on the night before LE.
The April eighth? But it's also. That's spring, that's spring break, right.
So people who are educators might be aware.
Can we move, so we can either move to the first or fifteenth, is that possible?
The first?
The first would be better.
April first, yeah.
So it's not on my day of spring break.
Right.
So we're moving the regular meeting in April to April first from the eighth. Anything else? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Approve the 2024, have a motion to approve the 2024 Board of Education grievance hearing calendar.
So move.
Discussion.
Just a point of information for our newer board members. These are placeholders. We don't typically have a grievance hearing each and every month, but we always reserve the time on our calendar so that we have.
I think we had. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay, item D, enrollment report. Okay, I have a motion to accept the enrollment report.
So move.
Any discussion?
Just a point of information for the board members. We continue to trend approximately two percent higher than at this point last year.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay. Item E, have a motion to report, accept the report of personnel, transactions, and extracurricular appointments. Move.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Item F, have a motion to accept a grant from Long Island Sound Schools Network to research various factors and increase ocean literacy in students in our community at How's Academy in the amount of five thousand dollars.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. All right, item G, all those in favor accepting a donation, can I have a motion for accepting a donation from BIC Corporation for Writing Supplies in support of Global Education Week at Smith Elementary School in the amount of two thousand seven hundred ninety-four dollars? Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just had a question regarding the waiver for photographs that they asked us to sign. If there are students who have requested they not be in photographs, that waiver would be covered that a parent who opted out.
Correct.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Item H, can I have a motion to accept a contract between CSDNB and Office of Early Childhood for individual consultants to support our school readiness teachers and/or administrators district-wide in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars?
So move.
Second. Discussion.
I abstain.
You can abstain when we, when we.
Oh, okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Abstentions, abstentions.
Oh, we have, we have two. Item, item I, have a motion to accept a contract between CSDNB and MAVE, the Multi-State Association of Bilingual Education Northeast.
Mr. Chairman, one person has come up. The contract has got to be signed.
Does it have to be executed by the president of the board?
Which contract is that?
And these that we're talking about now?
No, the protocol is that once it's accepted by a vote of the board, that authorizes the superintendent to sign. The only exceptions would typically be employment contracts, where it specifically states the signature of the chairman of the Board of Education.
Is required.
But typically, we sign lots and lots of such contracts once, in my office, once approved by the board.
Okay.
Item I, can I have a motion to accept a contract between CSDNB and MAVE, Multi-State Association for Bilingual Education Northeast, to provide professional development and technical assistance for staff of dual-language education at DeLoreto Magnet School in the amount of nineteen thousand six hundred? Have a motion.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Item J, can I have a motion to accept a purchase order between CSDNB and CWG for renewal of Google Education license district-wide in the amount of forty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars?
So move. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Item K, can I have a motion to accept a contract between CSDNB and Sprague Operating Resources for a one-year contract to fix the price of the natural gas supply for fuel cell district-wide?
So move. Second.
Any discussion?
I was wondering if this everyone up to bid or can you contact or?
This is our current provider, so it is not something that has gone out to bid. Ms. Alfano and Mr. Smithley are here to answer further questions.
I'm sorry, the question wanted to go out to bid.
Yes.
There's a master service agreement that has a twenty-year lifespan for the duration of the fuel cell at New Britain High School that governs the renewal of the natural gas for power supply.
And that's previously approved by the board, yes?
That is correct. It was signed in two thousand seventeen.
I'd like to pay a thanks to Mr. Smithley and Ms. Alfano for their quick action on this. We're trying to get board approval while the rates dip. So as noted here, we can realize notable savings, fifteen, fifteen percent savings, while we see just a slight dip in the market. We can take advantage of that and save some impact on our operating. We can take advantage of that and save some impact on our operating budget.
Thank you for sitting. Go ahead.
So, and board approval is okay, then you can sign this.
That's exactly right.
Anything else? Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Other items as allowed by law? Other items, uh, by law, we...
Other business as permitted?
Is there any other business as permitted by law?
Hell, you should shoot that one.
She never said that. You caught me on that one. Sorry.
Been on the court since 2019, she has never said that.
She would say anything else before we adjourn. She would say that, anything else before we adjourn.
Okay, there it is. No other business? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
You thought we were going to...
Thank you for everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.